Reminders. Legitimately as well. Thank you. Well, Dr. Case, if I could call the meeting to order of the East Porter County School Board of Directors this Monday, September the eighth, two thousand twenty-five, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance on the moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on opening item, you see the public input on agenda items. And again, meetings on the school board are conducted for the purpose of carrying on the business of the school corporation in a public setting. And that business includes budget oversight, approval personnel reports, policy development in direction of the school corporation. Citizens who wish to make requests, representation or proposal to the board are certainly directed to the superintendent, Dr. Case first, who deal with them according to policy. Well, now is the time to hear from our community. Portions of the meeting, we welcome your comments and value input. However, please note that this is a school board meeting held in public, not a school board meeting held with the public. And this distinction means we welcome your input. We are here to conduct board business and not answer questions or interact back and forth dialogue with the community. Well, I'd like to go over quickly a few ground rules. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. And then any derogatory remarks or direct disrespect towards any board member, staff, or teacher, or student simply will not be tolerated. In the event of such behavior, you will forfeit your time and may be asked to leave the meeting. Please be aware that personnel matters will not be addressed during this meeting as discussion of specific employees are not appropriate in a public forum. I don't have anybody for the business meeting. On the agenda, is any? Okay. Then I do have someone for the budget hearing when we start that. Mr. Chalmers can certainly speak for that. So the first item on our agenda actually is the consent agenda consisting of item two A, approval of the minutes executive session, which was September the eighth, two thousand twenty-five. This is by this business meeting here today. Approval of minutes for the business session, work session, financial matters payroll, financial matters claims list, and approval of the personnel report. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda I just spoke on? Considerate, before we do that, can I just make an adjustment? The personnel report is an adjusted personnel report that added another reservation. Okay. It's highlighted in yellow. And then also, just as a reminder, in our personnel, we are asking the board to ratify the decision that the superintendent made to hire some of the teachers early, because schools started after our last board meeting. I appreciate that. Appreciate those comments and understanding of the personnel report.
I'd just real quick, because I think I was asked at one point about the superintendent's ability, or the board's ability to approve things after the fact. And obviously, you have that authority.
Sure.
You give the superintendent, you know, the superintendent the authority to do that. Otherwise, you probably have to have almost nightly meetings at the beginning of school years. And so, so I just wanted to address that because that was a question that was raised.
Sure. Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I'm sure. I just have a question. I think under the consent agenda, we're trying to approve minutes that were previous minutes, and it's indicating that we're approving minutes from tonight. We should be approving the minutes of the August twenty-fifth, the August fourth, and two August twenty-fifths and one August fourth, correct?
That's what we have.
So, well, I think that's what we're going to do. I've moved to correct the agenda to reflect that we're approving the minutes from those, from the business meeting of Monday, August fourth, and the executive and business meetings of August twenty-fifth.
It's down here. Here, I'll show you. Down here, it says eight-four minute business meeting, and then there's the twenty-five.
See, the meeting date is today.
But this is just today. It's printed or not, it's reprinted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
It just says they were generated by her. So today is September the eighth, and that's when we are approving the consent agenda consisting of items A, B, C, D, and E. Thanks for that observation.
I think Ms. Bowersok had asked for a correction, I believe, on the executive session.
Okay.
Minutes that she was not present, is that correct?
Yeah, it says that she was absent, and she just wanted it being met through a conflict. She was not able to. Okay. Think we can amend it aside? I'm still working for a motion.
I would revise personnel report. Ms. Bowersok's changed to the minutes and has revised.
Thank you. Mrs. McCall, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Turpstrut. Is there any additional comments, questions, concerns? Sign them out. Call the question. All those in favor of the consent agenda consisting of items two A, approval minutes executive session, item two B, approval minutes business section and work session, item two C, financial matters payroll, item two D, financial matters claims list, item two B, approval personnel report, signify by raising your hand. Motion passes six-zero. And I know we have at least one individual here. Yes, we do. He's also a little humorous. Not only is he a musician and a P E teacher, but a fellow musician. Take a walk.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Blue, a great job here. So next is the budget hearing, and I certainly want to say a little bit about the budget hearing. The Board of Trustees, which are the proper officers of the East Porter County School Corporation and Porter County, Indiana, are conducting this hearing under two thousand twenty-six calendar year budget. This hearing will allow members of the public the opportunity to offer their input. Following the adjournment of this hearing, any tenant or more taxpayers may object to a budget tax rate or tax levy by filing an objection petition with the superintendent of East Porter County School Corporation. The deadline to file an objection petition is no more than seven days after the hearing date of September the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The objection petition must identify provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which taxpayers object. If the petition is filed, East Porter County School Corporation shall adopt with the two thousand twenty-six budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented at the budget adoption meeting. Following today's hearing, the Board of Trustees will need to adopt the two thousand twenty-six budget on Monday, October the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at five-thirty P M. at the East Porter County School Corporation office, five oh two East College Avenue in Couch, Indiana. So we will move forward. Is this the time for public input? And Jim Chalmers signed up to talk about the budget hearing.
There's no polite way to say this. The state has made your job harder, which has made a lot of people's jobs harder, including mine, with the hat I wear representing my colleagues. So I want to thank you for your creativity and your hard work because it just got harder. So I know you're doing things to try to make it work more smoothly. And until the state rises up and says to people, don't do dumb things, you have to survive and overcome dumb things. So thank you for making those efforts. And on behalf of myself as an individual, and I had three kids graduate from Morgan, and as a colleague and employee, I appreciate your efforts because it didn't get easier, it got harder. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalmers. And now, this is, we have some things to say, I'm sure.
I do, I do. So for our budget, I just want to remind you of budget four funds, the education fund, debt service fund, operations fund, and the ready day fund. The budgeting amounts that we have advertised are eighteen million, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand for the education fund, eight million, two hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars for the debt service fund, eight million dollars for the operations fund, and eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for ready day fund. For the education fund, remember those revenues are generated from support, which is based on our A D M counts for October first and February first, which gives us our basic grant, our economic performance grant, special education grant, recurrent technical education grant, any S P grant. And then for this two thousand twenty-six year, it will also include the regular material support. That is a separate line item, but incorporated into the basic grant. Instructional expenses are paid from the education fund, and a portion of this education revenue is transferred to the operations fund, which is not an appropriate expense, but you guys approve it in January, your resolution. So for our assessed value growth, we look at that for the operations fund, the debt service fund. The estimated assessed value growth is one million, five hundred, one billion, five hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred forty, zero, three, three. So zeros off once. Anyway, so when we do our budget, remember we're looking at maximums. And so we only put in ninety percent of that growth, although we expect it to be that much. We're only showing ninety percent of that in the actual budget that comes. So the tax rate will be a little bit higher than what we expected. New for this year, we will have homeowners getting the supplemental home set credits. We anticipate that that will affect our debt service fund, about eight hundred sixty thousand dollars, and our operations fund, four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. In the actual budget, that means that that is entirely in operations fund, but we don't know yet based on the law or it'll split between the two funds. Our maximum levy for the operations fund is just under five point three million. And our L G Q is capped at twenty, four percent for two thousand twenty-six, so we can't capture more than that growth in our levy. So the operations fund, the sources of revenue there are the property tax revenue, reduced spend server regular loss, and reduced credit credits. The local taxes are transferred from education, rental payments, and our interest. So our maximum levy is five point three million this year. In two thousand twenty-five, our expenses are just over seven million, and we anticipate. So there's not enough money, the property tax levy, to cover those expenses. So we have to generate the income from other sources. That's why we transfer from education, we have to make those, cover those expenses. So we tried to reduce that transfer as much as we can over the last several years. It's gone from, you know, close to nineteen percent in two thousand twenty, down to, we anticipate it to be somewhere around six percent in two thousand twenty-five. That's based on our A D M count. We already made the transfers for the year. We don't expect to make any more transfers, but if our revenue was less because we have fewer kids in October, that adjustment will bring the percentage up a little bit. So out of the operations fund, those expenses include our maintenance expenses, equipment, utilities, transportation, security, insurance, legal expenses, expenses for the school board and superintendent, our business office, and technology and network costs. For our debt service fund, that revenue was generated solely by the property taxes, reduced by the impact of the home set credits. And that appropriation is just our debt payments for, should we, or anticipated payments should we pass the new bonds for funding issue. Now, the ready day fund, we have appropriated eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that fund, but we haven't actually had an expense in that fund since two thousand nineteen, so something to do in case there was an emergency that came up and we have the approval of appropriations as the approval to spend. So you go, you fill our budget on maximum, so not as though that we are going to spend that out, but that we have the authority from the T L G F to spend it out should we need it. So as part of our budget planning, the bus replacement plan is completed based on the needs of our fleet, and the transportation coordinator, bus technician, work with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of business affairs, recommendations we have in the school board. The capital projects plan is collaboration from building maintenance, principals, director of facilities, director of business affairs, assistant superintendent, superintendent in the school board. So our bus replacement plan for two thousand twenty-six, we have three buses that we'd like to replace, two regular buses and a special needs bus. Those buses are from two thousand thirteen, so they fall under that twelve-year lifespan. We also have two parts of the capital projects plan, the assets and the actual projects. So for two thousand twenty-six, we just allocated some money for furniture, equipment, each of the schools, and then the plans that we discussed, the priorities. I do have one correction that I need to make to this plan on a date that tennis probably ceiling will shoot in two thousand twenty-six, not two thousand twenty-seven, so I will adjust that for my approval. But knowing that none of those expenses actually came out of the operations fund, you know, that seven million dollars in expenses does not include any capital projects. So we do not have funds in that, the revenue in that fund, it's just, okay, for these projects out of the operations fund, it would either be out of bonds, or we'd be spending down our cash balances through those, these projects. How's it teaching? Do you have any questions?
You may have any questions, comments.
Thank you.
Pretty brutal. We'll be adding that to the public content of our board docs as well. Thank you. Next on the agenda is action items. And the first action item is approval of the service contracts with Justin for all three high schools. So in years past, we used Herb Jones as our vendor for graduation certificates and caps and gowns and all that. Experienced some challenges with that, so the schools are looking to move to Justin instead. We ask the board's approval for that. And then it will take place at all three campuses. Do I hear a motion for approval of the service contracts with Justin for all three high schools? Moved by Mrs. Turpstrut. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Starr, is second. Any discussion, comments?
Can you? Sorry, maybe I just can't read it. The, under the remarks, what is it, first and third years of diploma pricing match?
I have to look at it.
Sorry enough to see if I can read it better.
Where is it?
Number six, under remarks.
First three years.
First three years. First three years. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So sign them out. Call the question. All those in favor of approval of the service contract with Justin for all three high schools, signify by raising your hand. And that motion passes six-zero. Next on the action items is item four B, first three new policies, thirty-one, one-one, six, zero, two, zero, six, one, three, zero, six, one, three, five, and seven, zero, two, zero. So basically, we made the adjustments from our work session on the policies. We are presenting them, however, there is one additional change. Mrs. Neavas.
For the student, you don't want to have, I don't think those upward changes that we, at least in the time they're looking at. For the amount, is this, this is at seven dollars and two dollars, should be, we talked about four and ten.
Yeah.
And also on the, at the bottom, it says to claim a refund, the parent must sign accounts payable voucher with the information that they want us to send the refund to. You don't, we haven't been doing that. We have a refund request form that they put the same information, but it's not on the actual voucher. So I'd like to change their language to just say a refund request form. That is okay with you guys. Otherwise, we're actually mailing them a physical copy of the voucher for them to send it back to us instead of just emailing the copy of the refund request form that they fill out.
Move the two changes that Mrs. Neavas asked for.
I'm just thinking about it, just a question. But that's what you'd like to have included.
Well, the next step is going to be a final thing. So I think you do, your motion to change was written here.
Correct. If you want to propose that it's altered, yes, I would make it into a motion.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Martin would like to make a motion to make those changes as presented. Do I hear a second to that? Second. Moved by Mr. Martin for the agenda. Seconded by Mrs. McCall. All those in favor, first of all, we'll just vote on that in the next week for the rest of the policies. For those in favor of making those changes, signify by raising your hand. And that motion passes six-zero. Any other discussions? Not on the policies, we handled that. Next. Next item is C, adopt resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seven, authorizing the potential refunding of the two thousand sixteen bonds. So in front of you, we're asking the board to consider the possibility of a refinance. So these are twenty sixteen bonds, and they've come to a point where we have the opportunity to do a refinance. And it makes sense for us to look at that at this particular point in time because interest rates are dropping. And if we can do this similarly to the time of when we're going out for the G O bond, there's some efficiency and reduce expenses in going out for refinance. But we are asking the board to give, Mrs. Neavas, me, myself, the authority to say yes or no. Obviously, it'll come to you for final approval. But if we don't see a net savings of at least a hundred thousand dollars, we would cancel moving forward with the bond because we're not going to waste the money to refinance if it's not a significant enough amount to save. The estimate is maybe approximately a hundred twenty-five to a hundred and fifty net is what they're estimating. But you don't, we don't know until we actually go out because we'll probably look at a negotiated sale as opposed to going out for public bid. That way, we will know ahead of time before anything goes through, and we'll see.
How long will that process take?
That is a great question. We will know, we'll know before November.
Also depends on whether you go out to bid or if you, yeah, because there's additional legal processes for, for that.
But we'll continue to work with Baker Tilly and Ice Miller as we have been working with their deal on. It was just recommended to us since we're already in that process. The only thing that we would probably have, there'd be a little bit for Ice Miller and Baker Tilly. The big part, our biggest cost to us will be doing our review of standards board.
Most payments are scheduled to be through two thousand thirty, so it's kind of a small window of time, wouldn't it make sense to be able to, you know, recognize enough savings to do that? Pleasant, I'd say.
Always looking for ways to improve. So I would entertain a motion for the option resolution twenty twenty-five through seven, authorizing the potential refunding of two thousand sixteen bonds. Who's that? Mrs. Starr, I got you. And second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Moore. Any other questions, comments? Sign them out. Call the question. All those in favor of adopting the resolution for two thousand five nine through seven, authorize a potential refunding of two thousand sixteen bonds, signify by raising your hand. And that motion passes six-zero. Next is D, adopt resolution two thousand twenty-five eight, approving third supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking. Mrs. Neavas, you want to take this one?
This goes along with that bond, so Baker Tilly also does our continuing disclosure, so this would just need to be filed, that third supplement, right? With that bond.
So moved, moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, well, you're getting right to. Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Sign them out. Call the question. All those in favor of adopting resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eight, approving third supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking, signify by raising your hand. That motion also passes six-zero. Next item is approval of Morgan Township and Couch senior trip. So in front of you, we are asking the board to approve the overnight trip for the senior trip. This year, Couch and Morgan are looking at doing their senior trips together. Therefore, it just be one, yeah, set of transportation, and we're excited to see how this works out. Or do I hear a motion for approval of the Morgan Township and Couch senior trip? Moved by Mrs. Turpstrut. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. McCall. Any comments? Could be a good way to save some money, have to, given the resources, if there will be some efficiencies in that.
I had a idea.
We haven't done it in the past. It's been several years.
No, we haven't. I think we did it a couple times.
Yeah, Morgan and Couch did it together one, one time in Washington. Somebody did it one other time also to Washington, D.C. Sign them, and no other questions or comments. I will call for the both of those in favor, signify by raising your hand. That motion passes six-zero.
I did have a question. Do we have any funding available for students who wish to go but maybe can't afford?
We don't have anything at the district level on that. However, in the past, there have been some generous donors that have helped for those particular ones. I don't know exactly how that gets communicated out, but I do know that's more at the building level, but I will touch base with all of them to make sure that they ask something.
Great. Thank you.
Good questions, Mrs. Starr. You know, for the moment now, I want to, as we have come to a conclusion of the business to complete, I want to step away from my role as president of the board, and I just want to talk and make a motion and discussion on a resolution. So I'm just doing this as a board member. And an item of discussion with the resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, and I would like to make a motion that that's added to our agenda. This resolution is in regards to public censor of Mrs. Natalie Bowersocks. Here is the resolution. Whereas the Board of School Trustees of East Porter County School Corporation is committed to the highest degree of professional conduct and ethics by its board members. And whereas the Board of School Trustees of the East Porter County School Corporation recognizes the various ethical duties and responsibilities board members have due to the public office toward each other, the school corporation, employees and students, and to the public constituents that elected them to the school board. and to the public constituents that elected them to the school board. And whereas the Board of School Trustees of the East Porter County School Corporation has promulgated various policies relative to the duties and responsibilities of board members. And whereas Board Policy eleven oh two states in relevant part that a school board member should honor the high responsibility which their membership demands by understanding that the basic function of the school board member is policymaking and not administrative. And by accepting the responsibility of learning to discriminate intelligently between these two functions, refusing to play politics in either the traditional partisan or in any, any sense, representing at all times the entire school community, accepting the responsibility of becoming well informed concerning the duties of board members and the proper functions of public schools. And whereas Board Policy eleven oh two further states in relevant part that a school board member should respect their relationships with other members of the board by recognizing that authority rests only with the board in official meetings and that the individual member has no legal status to bind the board outside of such meetings, recognizing the integrity of their predecessors and associates and the merit of their work, respecting the opinion of others and by graciously conforming to the principles of majority rule. And whereas Board Policy eleven oh two further states in relevant part that a school board member should maintain desirable relationships with the superintendent of schools and their staff by giving the superintendent full administrative authority for proper discharging their professional duties and also by holding them responsible for acceptable results, referring all complaints to the proper administrative office and by discussing them only at regular meeting after failure of the administrative solution, striving to provide adequate safeguards around the superintendent and other staff members to the end they can live happily and comfortably in the community and discharge their educational functions on a thoroughly professional basis, presenting personal criticism of any employee directly to the superintendent. And whereas Board Policy eleven oh two further states in relevant part that a school board member should meet their responsibilities to their community by refusing to use his or her position on the school board in any way whatsoever for personal gain or personal prestige, refusing to discuss personnel matters or any other confidential business of the board in his or her home, on the street, or in his or her office, earning the community's confidence that all is being done in the best interest of all schoolchildren. And whereas Board Policy twelve oh five states that in relevant part, board members have authority only when acting as a body duly called in session. And whereas Board Policy eleven five zero zero states that board members are encouraged to visit schools, that those visits should be scheduled with the building principal and board members will not give direction or make suggestions to personnel during their visits. And whereas Board Policy eleven five zero zero further states that board members who are visiting schools in their capacity as a parent of a student should make it clear she or he is not visiting as a member of the board. And whereas board member Natalie Bowersock has been acting in violation of the above referenced bylaws as demonstrated by the following non exhaustive list. One, Mrs. Bowersox has overstepped her role as a board member on numerous occasions and attempted to act in an administrative, not policymaking capacity. Number two, Mrs. Bowersock has refused to recognize her ethical duties as a board member by incorrectly claiming that such duties are not required by law. Three, Mrs. Bowersock has made various unsubstantiated allegations against school personnel and administration, but has refused to cooperate with school personnel and administration in the investigation of these allegations, stymying any such investigation. Four, Mrs. Bowersox has visited school property on various occasions without coordinating with building administration and while there has acted inconsistently with board policy. Five, Mrs. Bowersox's actions as a board member have resulted in internal complaints by school corporation employees and administrative staff. Number six, Mrs. Bowersock has discussed school board matters in various public settings and social media posts, undermining the community's confidence in the corporation and its processes. Mrs. Bowersock has made personal attacks on school administrators and personnel in public settings, social media posts, and in emails. And number eight, Mrs. Bowersox's actions have caused school administrators and fellow board members to unnecessarily exert resources and time in responding to and handling the same. Whereas Mrs. Bowersox's actions demonstrates a lack of understanding and respect for the high responsibility of her position as a member of the School Board of Trustees. And whereas Mrs. Bowersox's actions has necessitated this resolution to assure the school community and the general public that board members are bound to their ethical duties and responsibilities and to avoid the appearance that Mrs. Bowersox's actions are sanctioned or otherwise approved by the Board of School Trustees. And whereas a majority of the Board of School Trustees believes the public censure of Natalie Bowersox is necessary to emphasize the Board of School Trustees' commitment and desire for professional and ethical conduct at all times. Now therefore, be it resolved and ordered that the Board of Trustees for the East Porter County School Corporation hereby publicly censures Natalie Bowersox for unethical and unprofessional conduct in her position as a board member. Be it further resolved and ordered that the Board of Trustees for the East Porter County School Corporation hereby gives notice to its school, school community and its constituents that the opinions, actions, and statements of board member Natalie Bowersox are not necessarily that of the Board of Trustees unless specified during a duly called and public meeting of the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees hereby request that board member Natalie Bowersock conduct herself and conform her future behavior in accordance with the board policies and bylaws and Indiana School Board Association Code of Ethics. The Board of Trustees hereby demands that board member Natalie Bowersock refrain from discussing confidential business of the board with others and shall not share confidential business documents of the board with others. The Board of Trustees hereby demands that board member Natalie Bowersock refrain from all personal attacks on East Porter County School Corporation administrators and employees and that all of her future communications and interaction with administrators and employees be professional in language, tone, and demeanor. At this time, I would look for a second to the resolution twenty twenty-five dash six.
I'll second the resolution twenty twenty-five dash six.
Mr. McSpern, I think first you have to give a second to amend your agenda.
Oh.
Before you get to the resolution.
I will make a second to amend your agenda.
Thank you. That's what I meant to say. So you need to add this to the agenda. You, I made the motion to do so and you seconded it. Is there any other comments or concern? Go ahead, Mr. Oldes.
No, I don't have it. Just, this is only on, at this point, just on the motion to amend the agenda.
Correct. I kind of wound up there.
Yeah.
So we can still discuss once it's.
Correct. Yeah, and there'll be a, yeah.
Here you go. Any other questions, comments? Then I, then I will call the question. All those in favor of adding public censured school board member Natalie Bowersox, resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, signify by raising your, you know, that motion passes six zeros. So now, the question is on the resolution itself. Comment. I need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Terpstrud. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. McCall. Okay, now discussion. Questions, comments?
I have a statement I'd like to read. That would be okay?
Yes, ma'am. That's a question, that's a comment.
As a new member to the school board, I feel a deep responsibility to uphold the integrity, professionalism, and unity that our district so desperately needs right now. Recent actions by a fellow board member have not only disrupted the collaborative spirit that we must maintain, but has, have also diverted critical resources and time away from serving our students and supporting our dedicated staff. The repeated lawsuits and complaints against the, against the district and its employees have created unnecessary challenges. These recent actions consume valuable resources that should be focused on addressing the very real needs of our schools. The morale of our teachers and administrators has been impacted while they have demonstrated unwavering, unwavering commitment amidst unprecedented challenges. Our district is facing significant obstacles, including the ongoing unrest in our community and this troubling pattern of defunding schools across Indiana. In these times, we need cohesion, resilience, and a shared vision more than ever. We as a district are no longer living paycheck to paycheck. Guys, we're living on credit cards. This is not sustainable. We keep, we are being forced to do more with less. We agree with the public's directives for transparency and accountability. Earlier this year, we moved to work sessions and business meetings, both and have also moved to allow our agendas with attachments to be available to the community prior to these meetings so that they may make informed comments and be aware of what is going on in our district. Our goal is to maintain openness and transparency, involve the community in these discussions, and serve the district to the best of our abilities. I stand firmly with our students, our families, our teachers, our administrators, and our staff who receive overwhelming support from parents and community members. Their dedication is the foundation of our district's success. Moving forward, I am committed to a respectful, professional, and community-focused board that prioritizes the best interests of our students and community. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Mrs. Starr. Are there any other discussions, comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Mrs. Moore?
So this is just my opinion, but I would like to point out that all board members have multiple opportunities to share our opinions and provide feedback on various topics and agenda items during public work sessions. We also have another opportunity to do so at public business meetings before we cast our votes. If I have questions on upcoming agenda items, I always reach out to Dr. Case or a fellow board member in order to ensure that I'm prepared for the meeting. When Mrs. Bowersox states that she is the only person asking questions, that is not true. How could she possibly know what questions I'm asking? She isn't on the phone with me and half the time she is absent from the meetings. From January until now, the board has held a total of fourteen work sessions and business meetings. Mrs. Bowersock has been absent from seven point five of those meetings. It is important to note that board members also have the option to attend virtually via Zoom if they are unable to present, present in person. Mrs. Bowersock has only chosen to do this once and only for half the meeting. Attendance at board meetings is critical as this is where our voices are heard and where our votes truly matter. The statement that any of our voices are silenced is simply not true. In addition to attendance, strong board relationships and basic kindness is also essential to our effectiveness. Unfortunately, Mrs. Bowersock often communicates with fellow board members and the administration in condescending, demanding, and disrespectful manner, particularly when others hold a different opinion. She has also chosen to speak negatively on social media about the school district, sometimes making untrue accusations when outcomes do not align with her expectations. These actions do not reflect their genuine effort to build productive relationships or foster collaboration within the board. Serving on the school board requires more than simply holding a seat. It requires presence, respect, and a willingness to work together in the best interests of our students, teachers, and our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Any other discussion, comments?
I'm going to speak off the, off the cuff and just say thirty-five years, I've never felt like we weren't collaborating as a school corporation until the last few months. And we have a very high pedigree when other school corporations talk about East Porter were ranked high in all educational areas. And so it's very important to maintain that kind of a relationship. And it starts with the board. So I've been disappointed. I don't have any idea how many times censuring has ever been used in the state of Indiana as a school board member. It's never been used in thirty-five years that I've been here. But I, I fear that it's necessary to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other questions or comments? Or if there is no further discussion, then I will call the question of the public censure of school board member Natalie Bowersock. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion passes. Resolution passes six zero. Now we have closing items. Does any board member want to discuss?
I have one question. I wanted, and I should have been a backman with our bus replacement issue. In regards to the funding that I know we're going to be lacking. Okay, I guess I, as a board member, would like to express that I have never read, and I don't know if the wording has changed in this, but it used to be, I don't remember what it used to say, but no, it says, the plan is based upon presumption that the minimum useful life of the school bus is not less than twelve years. So we're, we have in our bus replacement plan, almost six hundred thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-six, that in my opinion, as a board member, if we need to look at saving money, that's one of the places to save it. Because we've never done it before. We've never put off the, we're waiting for buses right now that we haven't received forever, three years. So it seems to me like a logical place to begin to look to save money would be there. And I, I just put that out for the board to think about.
And I would say, I would just say that those are, right, maximums, right? If we get A'd and we go to approve the actual bid and you guys say, hey, this is too much money, we're not going to do it, you know, that's high. And since it's taken so long to get them, that's the hard part, see, if we're not ordering in advance, you know, we haven't gotten the last two years to order, we're afraid that, I think, one of those buses, the mileage is super high.
It's going to be about fourteen years old by the time.
It's a much, a much goshly good, a lot of special enough. So we're just afraid to not have that in their.
Right, I understand. I'm just saying that the, the state has arbitrarily made a twelve-year number. Used to be ten. Arbitrarily. And I'm just saying that there, from my perspective, for the board to consider, there's, there are things we can do besides cutting another question.
Here's a hundred percent. Hey, I got some positives, Dr. Case. All right. So Friday, Morgan Township Middle School Softball Team won the PCC Softball Championship over another one of our East Porter County Schools, Washington Township. So we got to give kudos to Coach Dras and Coach Friday and the team. We have so many kids out for a sport, but he made an A and a B team and that job worked real well. So great things in the future. Your softball's looking good at Morgan Township. Then, Dr. Case, this past Saturday, the Morgan Township Middle School Boys and Girls were champions once more of the Caston Cross Country Invites. So kudos to Coach Kelly King.
Fantastic. And I just, I just want to add to that too. We had a new, we had a new middle school coach, middle school, high school baseball coach at Washington Township replacing a very tenured coach. And, you know, whenever you're replacing a tenured coach, he, he was very good. We unfortunately got smoked in the finals by T-Word, who had a kid that could pitch seventy-seven mile an hour as an eighth grader, which is pretty darn good.
Yeah.
And also our, I wanted to say, the cross-country team at Washington Township has been doing amazing. There's some eighth graders and freshmen that could break records that are... I have a brother that holds a record that goes back into the 60s. And a freshman is about to break that. So they've also won two or three of the invites they've been at. So they are, it's fun to see those kids succeed. It's fun to see, you know, Spencer Sutton is the coach. I would give him kudos in the baseball world. And the Wilkins family is, coaches this cross-country and they have done an excellent job.
Well, any others? As if that, then we got superintendent. This is the lighter. She was superintendent.
Yeah, here we are in September already and it's hard to believe that the midterms are just right around the corner. Even with some of the challenges that we have been presented with this year, it has been a pretty great start to the year with teachers and students and just some of the exciting things that have taken place. I just have one community member to recognize, as we do every month, in regards to donation approval. Mr. Dave Good has donated $500 towards the House Athletics. And, you know, just our teachers are working hard. Our administrators are working hard out there and our kids are getting back into the groove of school. So we're just glad to have everybody back in the thingy role. That's all I have for you this evening.
Not a lot of things going on. Well, if there is another group of discussions or discussions, then entertain a motion to adjourn. I guess we just take it all night. Moved by Mrs. McCall's. Okay, is there a second? Is that Mrs. Star? I knew you were talking right. Start right in there. Any discussion, comments? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adjourned for this evening, signify by raising your hand. That motion passes six zero. We stand adjourned.